Live. Even though it's not giving me the link yet, so that's just gonna take a moment, so I'm letting you know that. So it's gonna go. I don't understand why it lets you go live if you're not actually live, but whatever. Let me, it's giving me the link, let me go to Facebook. Put that up here so that people can join us if they wish. And I hope.
Missing.
I should go there in like a hot second. Alright, it is there. Alright, I'll do my little introduction while you do your thing. Hey, everyone, this is, my name is Heather Ossianvi from Racine County I. I am one of the co-founders and it's current managing editor. Thank you for joining us. Good morning, afternoon, evening, whenever you are seeing this, if you are not catching this live. Today is our second to last Coffee with Candidates conversation, and normally we would be in the Racine County I offices actually sitting together with coffee. But I caught a bug earlier this week and I just really didn't feel like spreading germs to everyone, so we're, we're heading, we're doing everything on Zoom and thank, thank goodness for the technology. So today we have joining us Malik Frazier, who is running for a seat on the Racine Common Council in the first district. Malik, do you want to take a moment and introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Malik Frazier. I am a lifelong resident, well, lifelong resident-ish of Racine. I've been in Racine since I was eleven years old. And I serve in various different ways, our community. I work for Racine County Sheriff's Office. I love what I do. I serve in the United States Army Reserve. Been doing that for twelve years. Again, love what I do. And I am the co-owner with my mother of Frasier Support Services. And I'm sure we'll, we'll get into that a little bit later.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you for being here and I just, I want to tell you and everyone else. So I have two screens, so you are here, but the questions are over here. So I'm just gonna keep like turning back and forth, just so you know I am fully engaged, but have to look at the questions. Alright, so we have, we have ten questions in five categories. Our first one is a local economy and development. So what are your plans to attract, let me try this word again. Attract and retain businesses in Racine, especially in the downtown area and along the lakefront.
Ironically, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay, so the downtown area that is the, the first district, the, the district that I'm running for. So that's an area, area where I have heavily prioritized. And some of the issues, you know, when I talk to our business owners, some of the things that, that they have are kind of, it seems kind of trivial, but, but they're very realistic. Issues regarding like tenants and landlords, the impact of the economy for small businesses that are trying to survive, and then failure to receive the resources that they need. So I've had in, in my contacts with business owners, people reach out to me to, to talk to me about, you know, they're, they're reaching out. And this isn't me trying to, you know, throw mud and all of that, but reach out to my opponent to get help for questions that they have and they just are at a standstill. We talk about the economy, I know firsthand as a business owner trying to do what I can to support my employees while at the same time maintaining my business. So it's, it's, it is a, a hard mix and it almost is like a lose-lose. I think some of the ways to attract businesses downtown are to offer tax incentives and, and grants. Other, other, another way to attract businesses are to improve commercial space. So an example that I can think of, this past Thanksgiving, I went to DC to visit my cousin and his, he lived in downtown DC.
Okay.
And above the his apart, below his apartments were, were small shops. You know, and it's, it's if, if a small business can partner with a major corporation and they can come to an agreement, I think that, that, I think that is what can help us.
Can you help me connect those dots? Because I feel like in downtown Racine, we have stores with apartments above them already. So what do you, so can you connect that dot for me about what you're? Because I feel like those might be two different things, but I feel like they're connected for you. So can you explain that?
Yeah, so I guess offering healthy workspaces for people in a way that both parties can benefit. That a lot of people, like I moved, I, I moved to downtown and I, I live downtown in, in a new apartment complex that they just, that they just created.
The one off of State and Maine, that's like, just, okay. I'm pointing like I'm actually downtown, pointing over my shoulder like, oh, that one right over there.
Yeah, and when they first posted that they were downtown and they, they posted the floor plans with the prices, a lot of people were upset. And again, the, the economy in which we live, you know, people are struggling. That's just the nature of the beast. But if we can collaborate more, and I think that's the thing that you'll, you'll hear me touch on is collaboration. I think that we can see rent decrease, we can see businesses kind of flourish more. The biggest thing to me, and like I said, is collaboration. We need to collaborate and we need to be all on the same team.
Can I interrupt you just for a moment? So collaboration, do you mean more like public-private partnerships?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. To, to the degree that, you know, we're not trying to, to steal someone's shine, someone's trying to shine more than the other. But in a way, building a partnership where we both can benefit.
Okay, so you talked about housing, so that's actually the next question. How would you, as, as an alderman, address concerns about affordable housing and rising rent costs in Racine? Is that, and is that even something that you think is appropriate for the city to get involved in?
Have to be careful with what I say.
Do you have to be careful?
What, what I don't want to do is, I don't hold a lot of stock in the federal government. And as a federal employee, I have to leave it there. So what I will say is, yes, the city does have a role in housing. I think one of the ways that the city can help invest in affordable, affordable housing is
Let me clear too, like when we're talking about affordable housing, we are not talking about oh, now the word just went right out of my, subsidized, thank you.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
We're not talking about subsidized housing, but the matter is, there is no state in the nation where you can rent a two-bedroom apartment at fifteen dollars an hour or below.
There, there's no way. I think the biggest thing is we gotta offer incentives to these developers that are coming here. Those incentives can look like tax credits, those incentives can look like reduced fees. We can also utilize vacant lots. I travel up, I, I've traveled through Racine and I tend to notice things more so when I am on patrol for the sheriff's office, because that stuff just tends to pop out more, maybe speaking of more alert. Utilizing these vacant lots that we have to produce affordable housing. And then really, you know, my pastor is one who he really stresses, oh, you need to buy a house. And, you know, me and him, we, we get into these fierce debates.
Not everybody wants to buy a house, right? Like you're, so you're a young man, right? Use an example. Let's say you didn't, bless you. And I meant to say bless you earlier, but then you started talking right, so anyway, so bless you twice. But you're a young man. Let's say you didn't work for the sheriff's department. Let's say you had a job where you could work from home or work from anywhere. People who, you know, younger, younger millennials and Gen Z, they don't really want, they don't necessarily want to buy a house because they want to have the freedom after like a year in one place, being like, you know what? I want to go try somewhere else because I have my laptop and I can work from anywhere.
Right.
So like I, I get what you're saying and I can understand, I also understand your pastor's point of view because homeownership honestly is traditionally has been and remains the strongest path to generational wealth.
Right.
That's a fact, right? So I get both sides of that argument. But where do you see the city kind of falling in helping? You know, okay, so affordable housing partnering with developers, you know, more public-private partnerships, get that. But rising rent costs is a that is a beast of a, you know, of an issue.
Sorry. Bug that you caught, I think.
To be clear, I have never met Malik in person and I did not pass these germs to him.
I think, working, so I'm a school resource officer and, and these kids, man, they, they come to school with all kinds of germs and, and stuff, but whatever, you know, it is what it is. I think the biggest thing is tapping into the resources, resources that we have available. My mom, our business, she, she researches grants. A lot of people ask us, well, how do you have this program and that program and how are you able to maneuver and do this and that? And the third, it's because of grant funding. There is a lot of free money. And I think if the city can pursue some of that grant, that grant money that will help with down, if we're talking about, I know, I know we were talking about affordable housing, but if we're talking about like homeowners, right?
Yeah.
Pursuing money to help first-time home buyers with down payment assistance or rent subsidies or even the city hosting a, a financial literacy program for people my age, right? I think those are incremental steps. And communicating the fact that these are, are increments that we're taking and we're not just, you know, here, I'm gonna plop this big solution that's gonna solve all of your problems. No, this, this, we're taking incremental steps to address these issues. And getting people to understand that it won't happen overnight. It may not even happen in the span of three to six to nine, even, you know, twelve months. But we're building, we're setting up those building blocks so that you can be successful.
Okay, so moving on to the next one, and this is something that I know that is probably on your mind a lot as, as a deputy. Public safety is a top concern. But I like the, for Racine County, we're trying to expand that definition of public safety, so it's not strictly focused on law enforcement, although obviously law enforcement is a huge piece of that. But it's more, you know, like fighting poverty and healthcare and education and even making sure roads are plowed, right? And that streetlights where they're installed, that they're working, like garbage collection, things like that. So what strategies do you support to improve the relationship between law enforcement and the community at the same time we're addressing public safety as a way to reduce crime?
That's a loaded question. That's a loaded question. Where do I start? That is a loaded question and I could, I could take twenty minutes to answer that. I think.
You have five.
I think the, the first thing is understanding, when we're talking about addressing crime, I'm a little bit different in the sense of what are the underlying issues?
Okay.
People don't just decide to rob banks because they want to rob banks. We had a shooting at the beach a few years ago with these teenagers that went to the beach and they just, they just shot up the beach, right? That doesn't just happen because a teenager decided, oh, I want to get up and, and go shoot people. Looking at the underlying issues and addressing those. And I think once, once we address those, those underlying issues can be single-parent households, right? You have single mothers raising young boys. And if those young boys don't have young men around them that can help them become young men, you know, that, that are, you know, conducive to the society, you know, that makes it harder on the, on the mother. Another aspect is mental health. I think now we have become more apt in talking about the effects of mental health. Working in a high school, I see it all the time. Our kids come to school in crisis all the time. And, you know, when I was growing up, and I'm, my mom, when she was growing up, you know, we, we those moments were dismissed, right? You were told to just suck it up, get over it, get over yourself, get back into what you need to do and handle it. So I think really addressing those root, those underlying causes will help reduce crime and improve relationships. I'm trying, yeah.
No, I think that's, that is, that's a great way to put it. So perfect. Okay. So there are a lot of discussions at various levels of government regarding youth engagement programs. So what role do you believe the city can and should play in providing opportunities for young people to succeed and stay out of trouble?
Oh, I hope my mom is watching. This is a good shameless plug. Frasier Support Services is a three-pronged, three-pronged organization. It is a social services organization. We have a family-to-family mentor program that my mom put together that was developed in my mom's dissertation through her doctoral program. We have a seeds of regeneration mentor program that, that mentors young men specifically in a group home setting. And then we have the peace of mind group home that we have. It's licensed through the state, housed in Racine. We have eight kids. The reason why I mentioned Frasier Support Services is because we partner with the city of Racine and with Racine County with their youth employment program. And what I'll say is the youth employment program really helped keep our young men busy. Because a lot of times when they're not busy and they have idle time, that's
Well, idle hands and that whole
Yeah, you know, that's when all of these ideas come into their mind that are not conducive to what we need them to do and they're not fruitful. And so I think that, you know, really prioritizing these youth employment programs, these apprenticeship programs that really get their minds engaged in, oh, instead of thinking about hanging out with this person that's no good, I can go work with my hands. I can, you know, do something that piques my interest.
Let me ask you this, because, and this, I've asked everybody else this question also. The thirteen to sixteen-year-old range seems to be kind of an invisible group because they're too old to attend day camp, but they're not old enough to work.
Right.
Well, let's say fifteen and a half, because if you're fifteen and a half, you can sometimes get a job somewhere, right?
Yeah.
What about that group?
So our, our, our group home is licensed from thirteen, we can get you at twelve if we get a waiver up until eighteen. And so for us, what we do and what works and what my mom did with me personally is you can volunteer. Right? You, and it's really, to me, it's really about, it's really about putting that kid in an environment where they are exploring different interests. So when I interview kids to come to our group home, you know, I ask them, what are you into? And don't tell me sports, because everybody wants to be the next LeBron James or John Moran or whomever.
Right, Jordan Love.
Yeah, you know what I mean? Like, like what, what are you interested in? If you had a, a career-ending inj- injury, what would be your next move? And that's when you will get, you know, them to say a mechanic or a welder or a farmer. And what we do is we surround them in those environments. So we partner with
Can I interrupt you and ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, but you're talking about a group home that only has like eight kids in it. What about the rest of Racine?
So can I, okay, I'm not gonna, alright, so let me ask, let me, let me pose it to you this way. Where can kids go outside of the centers, right? Where can kids go in the city of Racine that is a safe space for them to explore their interests? That also
Excellent question.
That also supports families. Now, I've been thinking about this for a really long time. Now, for me personally, I had the Racine Family YMCA. Because it's, because it's right there. And I think that's where we're lacking. The Racine family, the YMCA for me was everything I can tell you firsthand, it saved my entire life. Because if it hadn't have been for the Y and all of its programming and the Y was focused on the entire family. Right? So we had programming for, for teenagers, the age group that you're talking about, right? The twelve to fifteen-year-olds.
Oh, I know. I used to work, so full disclosure, I used to work at the Racine Y.
Yeah.
I worked there. I helped with summer camp. When my kids aged out of the summer camp, like I helped Jeanette Brown, who was the director at the time. We devised like, kind of to be a quasi-camp counselor where they like helped the younger kids, but they still attended and had fun. So, yeah, I mean, you're right.
And I think investing in something like that, because the YMCA had, had programming for single parents. It had programming for fathers, focus on fathers mentor program. It had re-entry programs for people who were transitioning from incarceration back into the community. So I think if the city invested in a and, and the reason why I use Frasier Support Services is because we've kind of adopted that model where we're taking family, where we want to improve the family as a whole. We can do that with one family, just imagine the re, with the appropriate resources, what we, what we can do with families throughout the city.
Excellent. Bless you. Are, are you sneezing cough like, I feel like
It's a dry cough and it's
I hate that. It's like that tickle in the back of your throat. Okay. So infrastructure and transportation. What are your priorities when it comes to road repairs and infrastructure improvements in Racine?
Man, we need to, we need to repair these roads. I'm tired of driving down Washington Avenue and I hit something and then now my car start rattling and now I'm anxious.
Yeah, but Washington Avenue just got redone between West Boulevard, West
Yeah, but you know, you know, sometimes, sometimes it's not, it's not always like that or driving down Memorial. Yeah, exactly, right? It's, you know, it, you know, it's, I think my biggest thing, because I'm not a construction worker, so I don't, I don't know how that, how that goes. Is utilizing, I guess, if I'm privileged enough to get elected, using the influence that I have, right? Based on the observations that I make to bring, you know, these issues to the common council or, you know, the appropriate committee to, to address these road repairs. Know that firsthand with the sheriff's office, we have a good relationship with Racine County DPW. And it's, and it's great. And so I can only imagine for the city that that relationship is, is equally as, as good.
So still the same thing, there is a push for more sustainable transportation options, not just in Racine, but throughout southeast Wisconsin. Excuse me. Do you support expanding public transit and/or bike-friendly infrastructure and why or why not?
Yeah, yeah, that's like a no-brainer. Because number one, I'm a big health guy, even though I'm drinking Sprite.
You're allowed, you have a dry cough, you're trying to
Yeah, I'm trying to get rid of it. I think that it promotes a healthy lifestyle. I have a lot of friends who ride bikes. I was mobilized with the army, my sergeant major and my colonel, they rode there, we would, we would have our duty day. And then after the duty day, they would ride their bike for thirty miles. And, you know, these are forty, fifty-year-old men, you know, they're not, you know.
Listen, my mom is seventy-six, she has an e-bike. Sir.
Yeah.
Out and about.
Hey, I mean
Out and about. And she uses it, she only uses like the high setting to go up like steep hills, otherwise she's on like the lowest setting or no setting. So I, I get what you're saying, like, you know, biking and, you know, it's one of those things where I know on some roadways, it does feel like you're taking your life in your hands, like thirty-one, twenty can be terrifying. Certain sections, eleven.
Even thirty-two, Douglas Avenue, yeah, all of Sheridan.
Yeah, oh yeah, for sure. It can feel like, like you're taking your life into your hands. But overall, like, you know, bike lanes are shown to kind of reduce speeds. People are a little bit more cognizant when there's, you know, there's a bike lane and it's so clearly marked. Oh, you can't see me, I'm talking with my hands over here. But there's, you know, you know, there's a designated bike lane, it's clearly marked, you know, it has shown that it reduces speeds. Plus, you're right, it does promote more of a healthy lifestyle.
And then when you, I mean, obviously, and then the, the, the second part to that is the effects of the, on the environment, right? We want to by no means am I going to sit here and say that climate change is not real. The fact that it was seventy degrees last week and then the next day it was thirty degrees, that's a problem. It's not normal and we can't normalize that. So it's not a hoax invented by the Chinese. It's, it's very real. So anything that we can do that can sustain the environment while improving your individual life, I think that that investment is worth making.
Okay, awesome. So now we're gonna move into education and workforce development.
Oh, okay.
Why do you say it like that?
I'm ready, I'm ready.
So I want you to think of like with the, the schools that I'm about to name. I want you to think of them more as like partners, right? Education partners, because that's how I've been addressing them with, in the, in our other conversations. So Racine Unified School District, and then we have our local colleges. So we have Gateway, Carthage, Parkside, UWM, and I would even include Whitewater in that because they're not too far away. So how can the city better collaborate with these education partners and think about unified kind of at the center? To help better prepare students for the workforce? And is that even a role that the city should be involved in?
Another shameless plug. Being a school resource officer, I think it, I work at Union Grove High School and it's the way that they partner, because they partner with Gateway. And just seeing how they function in regards to, to the students getting their high school credits and college credits and enrolled into a program at Gateway. And upon their completion of the program at Gateway, they are pretty much slated for a job. I think that when we talk about, you know, apprenticeship, this, this collaboration, we have to look at think, education differently. We can't just look at, oh, you want to be a doctor, you want to be a nurse, you want to be a lawyer. I think also have to look at, a lot of these kids are not, college ain't for them.
No, I, I think the push for, like, I was pushed to college and full, you know, full disclosure, we, we did push our kids to college, but our fir-, our older two, that, they were like, this is for the birds.
And, and that, and that, and that's, that's exactly my point. And, and again, going back to what we were talking about earlier, if we push them into the fields that interest them, like carpentry, like welding, like engineering.
Culinary, so just so you know, I know that you're on Union Grove, but the academies of Racine actually do a really good job of that. There, and I don't know, and I don't know the answer to this question. I haven't had a moment to look it up really, but in Oak Creek, they have a construction class. And so you, you come into it as a junior and then you're just kind of like assisting. But then your senior year, you are actually working alongside a plumber, an electrician, an HVAC, a carpenter, masonry, whatever. But what the, what they do is they actually they buy a lot and they build a house from the ground up. And then they sell it on the open market, which funds the next purchase, you know, so like they keep it, they keep it going. And I don't know if Racine has the opportunity to do something like that. That would be amazing if we could do it.
And then like some of our kids at Union Grove, you know, and again, I'm not, I'm not a counselor. I just know, you know, on, on a situational basis, some of our, some of our kids, like they, they do the same thing with welding. They pick up a welding class at Union Grove and then they go to Gateway. And at the same time, they're taking up welding classes at, at Gateway. And then upon completion of their program at Gateway, they enter a welding union. And then their, their, their opportunity to get a job is, is like guaranteed.
No, I, I don't disagree. So when we live, the furnace blew on our house back in twenty seventeen, right? I mean, it was old. Anyway, so we had to have it, we had to have a new one and then it, we needed it serviced almost immediately. And the young woman who came out to service our furnace was a Park High School graduate. They had like a career day, there was an HVAC company there. I forget which one it was, but the one she ended up working for. She joined them, she was twenty-four years old and making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Don't tell me that.
I'm just letting you know, in case you were interested in switching careers. Um, but, but how can the city, like what's the city's role in doing that? In in like making sure that we can expand those programs?
I think is ta- taking the lead in in that collaboration. And really highlighting, and re- and really the city partnering with Racine Unified. Them two and both organizations really taking a a. A hard position on, this is for our kids. I'm very passionate about about young people. I work with them. Every single day. And really taking a passion, a a position, strong position on, this is what needs to be done to help our young people. Um and I think that if we do take that approach, and we are very, and the city is very intentional. Uh I think that it'll it'll just happen naturally. Can leverage those relationships and and really, you know. You know, because we're talking about how can we keep people here? I think that's why you keep people here. Yeah, you 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 tell me that I can complete these courses and I can. Graduate college and make a hundred and and fifty thousand dollars a year here? Why would I wanna leave? You know, and I think that's, again, making that investment and taking that hard stance. And really going out on a limb and not being so, I wanna get along. Like make, just just really taking that position.
Alright, so, last category, you ready? Government transparency and community engagement. So in this one, I really like to think of transparency and communication as two different things. So we have transparency, which is doing everything above the board and in the public light and all of that. But then there's also, how do you communicate all of that? To the people, right? So how do you feel that the city currently does with both transparency and communication? And where do you see areas for improvement?
That's another loaded question.
We don't play around here, sir.
I think that. We do, we do a terrible job. Let's just keep it a buck. Do it, we do a really bad job. And I don't think it's just limited to the city. I think it's all levels of government. One of the things that initiatives that I'm pushing at my church um is educating people. I'm gonna take, I'm on all of the social media outlets, and one of the, one of the elected officials that garnered national attention is um. Nat- North, I think he's from North Carolina. He's the Attorney General, uh Jeff Jackson. So, he he, when he was a congressman, he resigned from Congress to run for Attorney General, and he won. What attracted people to him is a lot of people don't understand how Congress works, just like a lot of people don't understand. Right, just like a lot of people don't understand how the common council works. And what he did, which is something that I would do, is he brought them behind the scenes. And he gave them a day-to-day um look on what it's like to be a congressman. And it wasn't, if you go on YouTube and search my day, a day in the life of a congressman, it wasn't any of that fluff. It was, these are the bills that 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 we discussed today, and this is how it directly impacts you. And this is, I think you should do about it. Um I think that if we took that approach. People's egos would be hurt and feelings would be hurt. I think if we really lifted the veil to show people, this is what the common council is like. This is what we do, even though, right, the committees are aired on Facebook. You can find these things, you can read, you know, the the minutes, even though they're very boring. And you don't really know wh- what you're reading. I think if you, if we are transparent in in that regard. And communicate in that regard, I think that, you know, the community would be more.
I also wanna challenge you a little bit on this, because. You can have a checklist, right? Like, let's say you're checking off like website, check. YouTube, streamed meetings. Check, you know, kept online forever. Um newsletters, check, whatever it is, right? Like, there's a checklist and they're all checked. You also, there is also personal responsibility in that, right? Residents, the city needs to let people know how they can find it. Like, we have all these ways that you can find it. But then people have to find it. So I just, you know, I think that it is a, it's a balance. It's definitely a balance, right?
Yes, and so so let me, let me push back. Um so I think the important thing is, um is. I can't hold you accountable if I don't put everything out there. I I I just can't, you know, so like, for example, again, using my church as an example. Don't come to me and tell me, well, I don't know all of these people on my ballot. When I've given you all of the resources that you needed to insurance, to for you to go. And so if we put the information out there, right? And people aren't doing their due diligence, because I'm big on on you need to do your due diligence. Because it's not my job to to to, you know, force-feed you. Like, I'm not doing that. You're, we are, we're all adults here. Then, then that's not a problem. But I think the issue is, some of the stuff is just so hard to find.
Yeah, agreed.
And when you have to click this link and click that link and go to this sub-ta- topic and that subcategory, it's like. You know, in today's time, people have the attention span of a fly.
I don't think it's a fly, I think it's more like a gnat.
Yeah, exactly. You know what I mean? I'm trying to be nice. I'm trying to be nice, right? So, you know, so it's like, but if if we put it out there. Right, then that, uh we, I did my part. All I can do is lead you to the water, right?
Can't make you drink.
I can't make you drink it. It's like that, I think that's the role that that I would take as an elected official and that the city should take.
Alright, so here's our last question. What steps will you take to ensure that diverse voices are heard in your decision-making process? Particularly those from underrepresented communities?
That's a good question. I love the the analogy. I'm with everybody at the table. I love that. I think that, uh and it go- kinda goes hand in hand with with the question you just asked. About transparency and communication. I think if we put it out there. To where we allow, we alert people to what's going on. Our alert is is inviting them to the table. Some people, you have to be very, very concise with your instructions. Uh but I think we're, that that the moment is too urgent right now. Uh we don't have time to pacify. Um it's. You see the need in your community. I'm at the table, okay? And I'm, I don't play the the race card. I'm diverse within my own right. But the the need is there. And so for me, my my take is, it's time to come to the table. Um and so for me, I will go to those places, uh those marginalized communities. Where people are often isolated and ostracized and. Inform them of what's going on and then invite them to the table. But like I just said, right, I can't bring you to water and force you to drink. So, it's either you get on board, like I tell my soldiers, it's either you get on board or you get left.
Okay, alright then. Alright, so, take this last minute. Make your final appeal, well, it's not final appeal, but the final appeal during this conversation. On why voters in the first district should check your name on April first or.
Right now?
Right now, or and or April?
I think, uh I made a post, but I had to take it down, because it was not becoming of the person that that I wanna be. I think it's just time to ignore the noise, and I think it's time to get get the work done. Uh and. Traveling, you know, going around my district, just hearing the fact that people don't know what's going on, they don't know who their elected official is. They don't feel represented. I think that, you know, it's time out for that. Um I think it's just, it's really just time to get the work done. And I'm the type of person, I don't have time for for petty politics. Racine is too small, and too much is happening for a community that's so small, where a lot of people are connected. So, if you wanna get stuff done, I'm your guy. And that's all I got.
Well, thank you for joining us today. I really appreciate the time out of your day to be part of our Coffee with Candidates series. Uh for everyone else, I just wanna remind you that today is Thursday, March twentieth, and early voting began two days ago. If you have not voted yet, you have plenty of time to do that. Or you can vote on Tuesday, April first. Polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM. And if you have not registered to vote, you can do that too. Even on election day, you can register to vote. So we deliberately do not endorse any candidates, because. Our goal is just to get you the information so that you can make your own decisions. And we just really want everyone to exercise their right to vote. So either vote early or vote on election day. But get out there and make your voice heard. So Malik, thank you again for being here. I appreciate the conversation. I know other people are appreciating this whole series and everybody who's been showing up, so thank you so much for this. I hope you have an amazing afternoon and um. I'm not sure if the link changes like from live to regular, but I'm gonna update the Facebook post with like the link after it processes, so. So you'll have access to that. So thank you again. I appreciate it very much. I hope you have a good afternoon.
Thanks, I'm going to Gateway.